Hi, everyone. I'd like to call the June 14th, 2022 Pleasant Ridge City Commission meeting to order. May we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Budnick?
Here.
Commissioner Lenko?
Here.
Commissioner Perry?
Here.
Commissioner Schmier?
Here.
Mayor Scott?
Here. And with that, I think we'd like to have an introduction to one of our new officers.
Hey!
Hey! I have never seen him not smile. He's just...
That's what's captivating about him.
That's right.
Good evening, everyone. We were going to introduce two. Lasted me about an hour and a half. Officer Lemke called and said he was unable to attend, so we'll introduce him at another meeting. Standing next to me is one of the two police officers that we recently hired. This is Pharoah Johnson. He was recommended from one of our former officers, JP Cormier, that worked here. JP had this young man in the academy. He had nothing but great things to say about him. When a position opened up here, he recommended Pharoah apply to our department. When I first met him, like the mayor said, always a smile, engaging, charismatic, youthful, something that we could use around here, right, Commissioner Schmier, so I don't wind up in the historical museum that I'm wound up to be at. So I'll let him, I'll let Pharoah say a few words about himself to you, introduce himself. He can talk about himself better than I can. With that...
Was that me? Oh, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening. Thank you, guys, for letting me intrude on your good meeting today. I'd just like to say thanks for having me be a part of this awesome city. I went to Ferndale High School, graduated in 2014. I know that probably seems like not too long ago for you guys. It's kind of weird. But yeah, like you said, Chief said I met JP in the academy in 2019, and then I worked for Wayne State down at Wayne State for their campus for about two and a half years. And then the position opened up here, and this is an awesome city, so I'm real close to home. It's like second home to me, and I was, I had to jump on it, wanted to come be a part of it, and fortunately, I was blessed to do so. So those are my parents in the back, my mom and dad. It's like a big deal for me, so I just, I'm super fortunate that they get to be here and let me introduce myself to you guys. So again, I'm super thankful and just feel much gratitude to be here with you guys. So thanks again.
Welcome.
Thank you.
We're going to impose for one more minute, just...
No problem.
Pharoah explained to me when he got hired here what the big, one of the main big reasons that he's here is because of the influence of his mother, and that he would not be here or be the person that he was without his mom's support and guidance and everything else. I have a similar background than you. My mom pinned my cheese badge on me. So if we can indulge, just for a minute, she doesn't know we're going to do this.
Oh, nice.
We want you to pin his badge on him. He asked, he asked for this.
How nice. That's awesome.
Don't think of all the bad times that he did things. Good times.
Okay, I think I can get us, I usually have to do this at my job all the time. I don't know why I'm struggling. You here with me?
Because it's on film.
No joke.
Okay, and...
Do you have dad? Do you want to help?
Okay, there it is. There it is. And grab a little of that beer.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, again. I appreciate it.
Well, we are, we are honored and proud to have you on, on our team, so thank you for being here with us.
Absolutely.
Thank you. We'll see you out there.
Yep, exactly.
Welcome to have you. As you can see, family means a big thing to Pharoah, which is key for us here. It's a smaller city. I think we all treat each other as family. We get to know each other. So this was a very big deal. Thanks for indulging us for a moment.
No problem.
Thank you.
All right.
Now, where can we go from there?
I don't know where we're going to go from here. That's awesome. All right, now we're up to public discussions, items that are not already on the agenda. I see one up. Plants.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Commission staff. Ted Zachary from 68 Devonshire, and I have four brief things to bring up. Do we have a city model by any chance?
I don't think so.
You know, like Ferndale has fabulous Ferndale or something like that?
It might be time for one.
I was thinking of something to incorporate the word kindness. I think that would be a kind thing to do. It could attract that kind of mood of being kind. I should bring this one up. It was the middle of winter. I got a tele, I'm driving down Indiana toward Woodward Heights Boulevard, and I got a call from my daughter, so I pulled over. Didn't want to talk and drive at the same time, and while I'm talking to my daughter, somebody to my left stops their car, rolls down the window, and asks me, "Is everything all right?" I was thinking, wow, that's really nice. And that person turned left. I think it was on Maywood. Anyway, I remember stuff like that. That's really nice. It's a kind thing to do.
It is nice.
I got another thing, point number two. Have you heard about no-mow in May? I was thinking it would be a good idea if we incorporated that, because that would be a kind thing to do for our pollinators. So no, no mowing during the month of May. And if the word got around, I think our earth would be better for it. Be kind to bees. Remember I had a goal of getting 222 of Ted's terrific tips?
Yep.
Do you remember that? Well, that's nice. I, I, I'd like to add another one. When you're on the ladder, washing windows or the gutter, I think it's a good idea to wear the helmet. And, you know, even, even if it's just a short ladder, I think it's a good idea. Okay, lastly, I wonder if I should bring this up?
Go for it.
I should bring it up. I had a real tall ladder, much taller than the ones usual that was tall. I did my stuff. I started to move the ladder, and the hammer that I had left on the ladder came down. Bonk.
Oh, no.
Had I been wearing this, I would have been okay.
Yeah.
I felt like part of the Three Stooges, you know? Okay, lastly, it's about the butternut squash.
Yes.
Anything moving on that? I'm still challenging you. And pardon my visual aid, you know, I like visual aids.
Oh, look at that.
I got some, I got three of them over here. If you need others, I got some at home. Do I have any takers?
I'll take one. I have a space behind my garage that would be excellent.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll get one to my mom.
Thank you very much.
I'm in the construction zone, so...
Yeah, if you have a third, if you have a third, I will take it. I actually...
Squash will get squashed.
Right, exactly.
Come to my house, I'll hit some more.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask about the no-mow May? And I noticed some people were participating. It seemed like, like was there a formal decision, like not to enforce the tickets at a certain level, or?
I don't think so, but I'll have to take that back. I...
Because just anecdotally, it seems like some people may have, and, you know, I wasn't seeing tickets or anything necessarily issued, so maybe, maybe indirectly or...
Yeah, exactly. Perfect. Ferndale advertises it too, no mowing May.
Right. Yeah, I don't think we advertised it. And it's an interesting time of the year, because we got a lot of rain this May, so I know people actually went probably over and beyond on mowing on some yards and not at all on others. So, yeah, well, I'll take that one back. I don't know that our, I don't know how our code enforcement or handled it.
Okay.
Something to talk about. Okay, any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ted?
Thank you.
You're so kind. Which number was this? You're at 197? Are you at 222?
I thought I would get a whole bunch. 222?
Right.
That's about 35.
Not bad.
It's a good start.
But it's going, but if it helps out somebody, I feel more confident when I'm on the ladder, too.
No, it is a great idea.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Any others for, please?
My name is Howard Smith. I'm at 60 Woodward Heights, and I just wanted to talk about the traffic on our street. I'm sure you know it's been nuts this year with all the construction in Ferndale and whatnot. And you're going to, I guess, today, talk about the calming on Woodward Avenue. And my concern is, is I think our street needs to be calmed before Woodward Avenue. Every time another street's calmed, 10 Mile was calmed, now people coming up Woodward think, oh, I don't want to wait in that traffic. I'm going to take Woodward Heights. You take a lane out of Woodward, it's going to make traffic heavier there. More people are going to take Woodward Heights. So please, before you calm Woodward, please calm our street. It was approved two years ago for concrete bump out, for these radar signs. Nothing's been done. It's been two years. You know, I mean, the trucks, I emailed James quite a bit, and he helps me out a lot, because I take photos of the truck with the truck number, because GFL, Waste Management, and these concrete mixers and dump trucks have just been belting back and forth, back and forth, all week long during business hours, like from eight to six. And from three to six, the traffic gets so bad, it's difficult to get in and out of the driveway. I mean, I'll see a car stopped at Bermuda down the block. I'll back out, and before I can get going forward, it's on my bumper already. You know, 3,000 cars a day coming through our street, 90% of them drive okay, but it's at 10% or 300 cars that don't. There isn't a day that goes by, I don't hear a horn blow, or obscenities being yelled out a window at somebody, you know, it's just, or passing. It's just a matter of time. Somebody's going to get killed on that street until we bring that 300 cars that are ripping through there down to the speed limit. And I have noticed our police department, and thank you Sergeant Reed for taking care of that one car that was ripping through there at 11 o'clock. He does rip through there about once every week or two now, but it's, you know, once in a great while. It's not every night. I could have set my watch to his ripping through there. But thank you for patrolling our street. I've noticed your cars on our street, and that's helped significantly. That extra patrolling has made a huge difference. And maybe we can get some between that 3:00 and 6:00 p.m. timeframe when traffic is the heaviest on Woodward Heights, but please try and calm our street before we calm any more streets, because we're just going to pick up more traffic as other streets are calmed and ours is left alone. So that's about all I had to say. I thank you for your time and listening and patience with me.
Oh, no problem. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I got to go. I can't, I had surgery, so I can't sit on these hard chairs too. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Take care.
Mayor Scott, Commissioners, my name is Deb Hemi, and I am the library director at the Huntington Woods Library. Just wanted to give you a little update, and as I'm making my notes, I'm thinking, this seems really lame, and I feel like we've done a lot. So a lot of little things that I promise you add up to, to more than what they sound like. But one of the little things was creating a group study room, so, and we hope to have two of them in the fall when school gets going again. So that was just a little bit of a changeover, but we're doing a lot of smallish things to make the experience in the library building to be, to be more useful and more pleasant for people. Our summer reading program kicked off on June 1st, and currently we have 95 children and 31 adults enrolled in it, which is great. Yeah. It runs through the end of July. Unfortunately, our children's librarian is leaving. She is part-time, and she got a full-time job in Illinois, so she is leaving next week. Yeah. So anyway, next time I come here, I hope I will be introducing our new children's librarian to you. That's it.
Thank you.
Yeah. It's funny, the library came up in a discussion I had this weekend, and everyone said, you know, they've had such a great time at the Huntington Woods Library. It's just worth recommending to everyone. If you don't already have a card, just get a card, because you're likely to find something there or an activity that's, that's good to take part in.
There's a lot of digital resources, too, that you can use away from, we just went to Berkeley High School yesterday to sign kids up so that over the summer, they can download digital books and digital audiobooks and kind of keep their reading going and keep up with their AP classes and things like that. So, yeah, lots of reasons to have a library card.
Yeah. Well, and the board members have done a great job so, of helping keep us all informed with all of the special programs you guys have going on. It has been really great. So thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First time, long time. I'm Charlie Leduff. I live behind the community center at the park. My property directly abuts it. I'm going to quote the Pleasant Ridge Municipal Code, Section 42-103. No person shall make or continue, continue any loud noise which annoys, disturbs, injures, or endangers the comfort, repose, health, peace, or safety of others within the city limits, including but not limited to, playing or amplifying any radio, tape, or disc player, or any other electronically stored media or musical instrument in such a manner or with such volume as to produce sound that is clearly audible more than 50 feet from the source that annoys or disturbs the quiet comfort or repose of persons in any place. Further, yelling, shouting, hooting, or singing at any time as to annoy the, or disturb the quiet comfort or repose of any persons in any place in Pleasant Ridge is prohibited. Further, Section 34-21, use of any loudspeaker, amplifier, or other instrument or device for any purpose is prohibited unless in accordance with the following. Operations are permitted four hours each day, except on Sundays and legal holidays when no operations shall be authorized. The permitted four hours of operation shall be between the hours of 11:30 a.m. and 1:30 p.m., and between the hours of 4:30 p.m. and 6:30 p.m. The volume of sound shall be controlled so that it will not be audible for a distance in excess of 100 feet from the sound amplifying equipment, so that the volume is not unreasonably loud, raucous, etc. The community center has been tricked out at like a for-profit club met over these past couple of years. Wasn't that way when I moved in. It's, they've created a nuisance. Our quiet, yet justifiable concerns have been ignored as it grows louder and more raucous every year. Now, I've spoken with the former mayor, the city manager currently, former commissioners, the recs department. Nothing. You know what they've encouraged me to do? Call the police, which I shall not do. I do not call the police on my neighbors. And I don't do that to the police. It's a difficult enough job as it is, and I thank you for the very good job that you do. We are bombarded this Friday. We're renting it out now. That's nice. There was a nice graduation party with 250 people and a DJ. That's my Friday night. My Saturday morning is the swim club with the bullhorn at 8:00 in the morning. Then there's a catered party again Saturday afternoon. We had movie night during COVID, no less. We had live music in the park during COVID, no less. We have volleyball league right now and booze volleyball every other day of the week. Day camp started. It's five days a week. We all work at home now, and I can't wait for the yearly sleepover right in my backyard. It's going to be awesome. I'm told permits are issued for these events, and I've spoken with prominent municipal attorneys. A permit is not a license to subsume the law. So if there's a permit, it's not legal. You must abide by this. I make a living battling City Hall, but I do not wish to battle my own. I love this community. I like being a part of it. I don't want to be the grumpy guy. It's getting out of hand, and I can't deal with it. Neither can my neighbors, but they asked me to do it, and there was a lot of calls made last weekend. So I would ask those responsible for the community center to simply police it yourself, tone it down, scale it back. I didn't ask to end anything. You notice that? Not that guy. Hang a prominent sign or two reminding people to respect the neighborhood, and we will give the respect back. That is all. I'll check back with you next month. If you'd like to reach me, it's leduff10@gmail.com. Thank you for doing the job. I see some of my favorite stuff, the budget and the tax rates. I live for that stuff, but I'm on deadline, because I got to hold Detroit accountable. I will read it online, and I'll be in touch. Thank you.
Thank you. Charlie, just for the record, your address?
It's nuts out there.
I know, I know. It's the rules. It's the rules.
8 Woodside Park, 48609.
Thank you.
Founded in 1911.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners.
We keep giving you tougher and tougher acts to follow.
Bobby Lawrence from State Center of Marshal Bullock's office. Just wanted to say hello. It's good to see everyone, and just wanted to let you know we're here and we care. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, on to governmental reports. Commissioner Perry? Oh, sorry, governmental reports. I skipped ahead, sorry. No, don't.
Charlie Leduff, it's a tough act to follow. I know my gun lock thing is going to match up, but anyway, we're relatively quiet in town. Crime happens. It's not a huge volume like other cities have. I only caught part of the code enforcement thing with the lawn thing or whatever. I was going to mention that it is that time of year where lawns are, we're aware of it. The code enforcement officer and the police department are on those things. Some of the people we found are having a problem with their, people that they hired, their lawn service company, not responding or not wanting to do the job or things like that, and then they're trying to find somebody else to do. I've noticed that in a couple. I myself have written several warnings and violations or whatever for that. So we're aware and we're on that, and we take that seriously, trying to keep the city nice and neat. Guns are a hot topic as usual, especially right now. I just wanted to make quick, we could spend hours talking about guns, whatever. We want people in town to be safe. You have the right to own a gun, possess a gun, everything like that. Just we want, would encourage you, if you have a safe, put the gun in a safe unloaded. If you, they make little small, like lockbox things that you could have and everything else as well, and different sized safes and everything else. We also have gun locks. Doing the Charlie thing. We have gun locks at the police fire. We have hundreds, maybe thousands of them. Every year, Oakland County does a project child safe. They give out gun locks. We have them here. We're also available to coach people or give them ideas on how to properly secure firearms in their, in their home, if they have questions and things like that. We have plenty of these available. If you want, we'll show you how to install it, do whatever. If you don't have the ability to have a safe or a little lockbox or something like that, then we recommend at least a gun locks. So if people have questions, come see us at the police department. They can be available at the rec center at the desk or here, either the police fire or City Hall side. And like I said, we have hundreds of them. So any questions?
Good for me. Thank you. Any other governmental reports tonight? Nope. All right, now on to liaison reports. Commissioner Perry?
Thank you, Mayor Scott. I appreciate it. So the, the planning commission and DDA did not meet this past month, but they will be meeting on Monday, July 25th. And I know they are all very excited for the Woodward Cycle Track Green Infrastructure Landscape Project update that'll be later in the meeting. But that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. On to Commissioner Schmier with the historical commission.
Thank you, Mayor. So, starting with the sad news first, the sanctuary tour, the garden and sanctuary tour has been canceled for this year. But on a positive, fingers crossed, next year, we will be able to have the full house and garden tour again. So that is the hope for next year, but unfortunately, this year, it has been canceled. Museum is opened, this month is weird. It's short, but the museum is actually open this Saturday, 10 until 12. So feel free, come in, check out your house file. Also, you can buy your holiday tile, which we saw last week, but they're gorgeous. So definitely, they will be for sale. You can buy them in the museum. You can also buy them here in City Hall. So those are available. And I think that's it. Actually, last reminder, the museum is open, and I think Commissioner Budnick stopped by, but is, it is open right before our commission meeting. So if you can't make it this Saturday, you can make it next month before our meeting. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On to Commissioner Budnick and Recreation Commission.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I did get a chance to check it out. It was Commissioner Lenko and I just kind of fell in there for a few minutes, and it was, it was cool to see, to take, take a look at my house back, you know, there was a picture from 50 years ago, and then another one from the 90s. It was just to see the progression of things. And yeah, cool little gem that we have.
Yeah.
Of history, right? Well, the rec, rec in the summer has a lot going on, so we got, we got a few things to be excited about here. First one is, well, the upcoming programs for June. All the programs are, you know, here are the registration deadlines that are going to be listed with, with all these events. So Family Campout is Friday, June 24th. There's swimming until 10 p.m. Hot Dog Cookout, caricature artist, movie in the park, and much more. It's, I always hear families talking about this. It's super fun. It's, the kids love it, and what a cool, cool night. The Ice Cream Social is July 13th from 6:00 to 8:00. This is sponsored by Woodward Corners and Oakland County Parks, so bring shoes for the climbing tower they bring, which is super cool. Free to attend. Please preregister by 7:00, 6:00. There is a teen trip to Cedar Point on Friday, August the 12th. That's 7:00 a.m. to midnight. Must be in at least middle school to attend this trip. Exercise classes, you have yoga and water aerobics. Register for a session or drop in with, with a cash or check. Sign up. Adult swim dates, 8:00 to 9:00 p.m. We have July 6th, the 26th, August 10th, and August 25th. Alex, no guest passes. Teen Night Swim, 8:00 to 9:00 p.m. For teen nights, that's July the 11th and the 28th, and then August 8th and the 23rd. No guest passes allowed either. The pool schedule is posted online and at all of the pool entrances. It is now open for its official summer hours, which is awesome. And watch for your July Bridger. That'll be in the mail soon, online even sooner. And thank you, Shawnee.
Yeah, I was told that I could be the oldest guppy this year, because I don't know how to swim, so... That's right. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Commissioner Lenko?
Yes, sir. So last update is education. So school board met May 16th. The next meeting is next, on the 20th, next Monday. If you're interested, I recommend checking it out in person or on YouTube. But more important is the search for the superintendent. So they've paired the, down-selected the group from five down to two, and they're interviewing the final two candidates tomorrow, where they normally hold the board meeting. So if anybody's interested to attend, you know, it's, it's open to the public, and they're encouraging participation. Now's the chance to see the candidates and ask the questions. And then obviously, there'll be more information after the meeting on the 20th.
Do you know what time tomorrow night?
I think it's either 7:00 or 7:30.
Okay.
But yeah, if you go onto the Ferndale Public School website, they'll have the full details, and it's the building, or it's a, basically the common area, like right after in that big hallway.
Okay.
Hard to describe. But, and then the cool feature, too, at least I think, is both of the finalists are local. So they're the assistant superintendent. One is from Farmington Hills, the other's from Oak Park. So I don't know, for what it's worth. So wanted to share. That's the update.
Awesome. Thank you. All right, I'll move on to the consent agenda. Some items of note on that agenda. It's LGBTQI month in June. We had some discussion in the office on which of the letters to include. This is the UN's recommended, recommended lettering for LGBTQIA+ group, which I'm a member of. And also, we've come to agreement on the police contract, so that's in the consent agenda. So that's wrapped up. I might have a motion.
Mayor, I move that the consent agenda be approved. Mayor, I move that the consent agenda be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Maybe have a vote.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmier?
Yes.
Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Lanko?
Yes.
Yes. The motion carries. All right, and now on to the discussion about the budget. Jim wasn't able to make it tonight, but he's here virtually.
Great.
How are you feeling?
Hello from quarantine. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, good. Amy, you wanna move along, we'll just do a real quick presentation. It's about a third of the length of the one that we saw last month. The budget has been posted on the website for the last month and available for review. Tonight, we're going to hold the public hearing on the budget and the millage rates and the next action will be to adopt. Next slide, please. So the, the headline is the millage rate, twenty twenty one millage rate was twenty one point three one one zero mils and the proposed twenty two millage rate is twenty one point nine 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 seven mils. There's a lot of discussion about the water infrastructure millage leading up to this and the city commission has moved forward a proposal with a one point six nine eight seven water infrastructure millage, but also some reductions to other millages, most notably the parks improvement millage, which would be reduced from point six five five seven mils in the current year to point one two nine zero mils next year. Next slide, please. So this highlights how that offsets some of the new water infrastructure millage coming online. The millage revenue is paying off the Gainesboro Park project. That lost millage revenue for the, from the parks village will be replaced by the parks special revenue fund, which is the parks endowment fund. This is a total reduction of about two hundred and twelve thousand dollars in taxes over three years. And you can see the total millage rate trends over time, we've stayed fairly consistent. When you pay your tax bill, about forty seven percent of that comes to the city and the remaining fifty three percent goes to all the other taxing jurisdictions. The largest ones being the school district, the intermediate school district and the county operating levy. So that's the broad and quick overview, I'd be happy to answer any questions anyone has on any specifics of the budget itself. And if there are none, then we'd open the public hearing and proceed.
Any questions for Jim?
No, I mean, this is my first budget process and I appreciate all of the time and the workshops previously set up to review everything and I, I feel comfortable with all of the numbers.
With that, I will open the public hearing. Seeing no comments, I will close the public hearing. And ask for motion.
Mayor, I move the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three combined city budgets be approved and that the budget resolution be adopted, including the levying of twelve point one seven two six mils for the general fund operating, two point five four three eight mils for infrastructure improvements, one point four five two six mils for solid waste and disposal, point two seven mils for publicity, point three three eight mils for library services, one point oh seven eight four mils for community center complex operations, one point oh four mils for community center complex debt service, point one two nine mils for park improvement, one point two seven six six mils for police pension stabilization and one point six nine eight seven mils for the water infrastructure, be approved as recommended.
May I have a second?
A second.
Were there any comments beyond that? I think we're, all right, may I have a vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmier?
Yes.
Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Lanko?
Yes.
Mayor Scott?
Yes. The motion carries.
Thank you, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
Thanks for all the work and the presentations that, that we got, they were very interesting. And I, I met a new neighbor in town who is a data person and she was very impressed by the, all of the charts and everything in the beginning and, and the data, so thank you.
All right, with that, we'll move on to the drinking water state revolving fund and the project plan. Jim?
Yes, briefly, so the drinking water revolving loan fund project plan is a step that we have to take towards applying for D W S R F funding. This is where all of the federal infrastructure money for water infrastructure is being routed from the federal government through the states to the locals, so we have to apply, it's a competitive process. I think the state got over one billion dollars of applications for drinking water projects this year and they have about two hundred and fifty million dollars of funding available, so this is a very competitive process. The project plan that we will be holding the public hearing on tonight is a necessary step towards applying. The good news is that this project plan is good for five years, so we can reapply in each of the following years if necessary because the federal infrastructure money is rolling out over a number of years into the future. So we'll be ready to apply and keep applying. We do have our engineers here, I think Mike Smith and Mike, is Brett with you?
No, it's just me.
Okay, so Mike Smith is our, our primary contact at Anderson X Jean Westrick, the city engineer and with that, I probably said some of the things he's gonna say, so sorry, Mike, but.
That's okay, you can keep going. All right, before, I've got a little presentation to kinda go through the project plan, but before that, any of the attendees that are back here, I asked that you sign in on the sign in sheet. The state requires us to provide a sign in sheet for everyone that's attending the public hearing. So if you guys are planning on staying for the actual public hearing portion, I would sign in. I've got a pen and a piece of paper. I've got all of us, I've got all of us up here signed in already, so you guys are good.
Okay.
We're not only signed in, but, yeah.
Voting.
Yes.
Yes, exactly.
But, so a quick overview of the D W S R F, it's the drinking water state revolving fund loan. It's offered through the Michigan Department of Energy, Great Lakes, sorry, the, Michigan Department of Energy and Great Lakes Energy, I think that's wrong. But it's otherwise known as Eagle. We are applying for a low interest twenty year loan, currently the interest rate is one point eight seven five for the fiscal year twenty twenty two. The project plan must be submitted each year by May first, except this year they have extended that to July first, so that's why we're at this point right now. We're gonna go through the public hearing, hopefully that's approved at the end and then we'll button up whatever we need to do, take any comments from the public hearing, add that to the project plan and submit it to Eagle for their review. Projects are ranked and placed into project priority lists and funded until allocation for the year has been exhausted. Currently, there's two hundred and fifty six million dollars available, but there are other federal funds coming in, as you know, from the fed level and so that money could increase, which also increases your chances of getting this project funded. So a brief overview of the city's current distribution system. You have approximately eleven miles of water main, anywhere from six inch to eleven inch in diameter. You also have a hundred and four gate valves, ninety seven fire hydrants, eight hundred and twenty five lead services, approximately three hundred and twenty copper services. Your system was originally installed back in the early twenties, which a lot of that is still in the ground and that's why we're here trying to get this project funded, so we can replace a lot of that. Typical design life for a water main is anywhere from fifty to a hundred years, so a lot of your water mains are approaching that or are at that hundred year mark. Your water comes from Saquaw, who gets their water from G L W A. You have one meter connection with Saquaw and four emergency connections, three with Ferndale and one with Saquaw. Your proposed project, we are asking for twenty four point five million dollars to replace several water mains and install a few new ones to close some gaps and install some loops throughout the system. The replacements themselves include about seven and a half miles of, of water main replacement on twenty one different streets. The reason why we wanna replace these, a lot of them are six inch water mains, which we wanna upsize to eight. That meets current standards, it also improves your system reliability and your current flyer, fire flows, sorry. As I mentioned earlier, we wanna complete some gaps in your system to also expand that reliability and increase fire flows to certain areas of your city. By completing those gaps, it'll force more water to certain areas and help those fire flows improve. So in the event there is a fire, the water and pressures are there to put that out. Lead service replacements, so the city has approximately eight hundred and twenty five lead services and in this project plan, like I mentioned, there's twenty one different streets we wanna replace the water main. Included in those water mains, we would replace every single service associated with that street. Not all of the homes on those streets may have a lead service, but if there is, it will be replaced. And currently, there is a lead copper rule through the state that the cities must replace all lead, all lead services by twenty forty one, I believe. So yeah, you have a twenty year period starting in twenty twenty one. So this also gets you in place to replace your lead services. During the preparation of the project plan, we had to analyze different alternatives. Four of those alternatives include a no action alternative, which is the do nothing approach, which is, I do not recommend. If you do nothing, your system continues to age, your risk of breaks increases, your flows decrease, your maintenance in, costs increases and then obviously you don't replace those lead services that are mandated by the feds. Another alternative was replacing water mains by the open cut method, which includes digging a large trench, you know, down the street or in the green belt area to install the water main. Now, we all know this is an older community, so you have a lot of existing utilities, you have very mature trees, you have tight green belt spaces and that's not feasible in all areas. So typically, we'd like to put that water main right under the sidewalk because there's not a whole lot of utilities in that area and it's a good fit for it. But if we were to open cut and put that water main there, you're talking about removing all that sidewalk, driveways associated with it, possible pavement and potentially your trees on the one side of the road. So you're looking at destroying, you know, mature trees on one side and one side, you know, leaves them, it kinda looks a little, little weird. So that, that alternative there is more costly than some of the others I'll, I'll discuss. The next one is horizontal directional drilling, which is our preferred method. This method includes drilling a water main underneath your sidewalk and just open cutting areas where your service connections are or where you may put a hydrant or a gate valve. That minimizes a lot of the open cuts that you would see in the open cut method. With that, you would also be able to save a lot of your mature trees because you're not digging completely across the root system. We may lose a few trees because we don't know where those existing water services are at, you know, depending on, some, some of them may be underneath the tree, so sometimes we may have to take out a tree. I don't wanna say that we're gonna save them all, but we're gonna save a lot more than we would than the open cut method. The next option is pipe bursting. Pipe bursting is bursting open your existing mains to enlarge the diameter so you can pull through a new conduit. Unfortunately, in the city, a lot of your water mains are located under the roads or under the curbs. So if you were to pipe burst and put that new main there, you would have to dig up to make your connections. So now you're digging up your streets, you know, at every single service lead, hydrant connection, gate valve. So you're gonna have several little holes throughout the, you know, throughout the pavement. That, that option gets costly and not recommended. Out of the four alternatives, the horizontal directional drilling is the most cost effective and recommended option. Next slide. Back to the, the map. Okay. So here's your draft project location map. I'll kinda briefly go through all the areas just to have it on public record. We'd like to do this project in a multi-year phase, you know, do so many streets, year one, year two, year three, year four and so on. Year one, we'd look at Cambridge Boulevard between Maple Field and Ridge, Cambridge between Oxford and Woodward, Woodward Heights between Woodward and the east side, southbound Woodward between Elm Park and Oakland Park Boulevard. That section there is a, is a loop completion, which is located right here. Currently, you have no water main in this section, so that would connect a loop and provide more reliability and fire flows for the west side of the city. Indiana from North City Limits to Woodward Heights, that currently there is no water main on Indiana, so that would also provide a looping system and that would benefit the east side of the city because currently all those water mains, you know, just shoot down and end at a main that's either off of Gainesboro or if you go down to Woodward Heights, it just dead ends. So it would provide that looping that the system needs. And then finally, for year one, we're looking at Poplar Park between Ridge and Woodward. Year two, Fairwood between Woodward and the east end, Ridge Road from Ten Mile to the South City Limits, Wesley Drive Woodward to the east end, Oakland, oh, sorry, Oakdale Boulevard from Ten Mile to Cambridge. Then in year three, we would look at Norwich between Oakdale and Ridge, Hanover between Oakdale and Ridge, Hamhurst between Woodward and the end, Sylvan between Woodward to the end, Ken Burton, Oakdale to Ridge, Elm Park, Oakdale to Ridge. And then year four, Devonshire Woodward to the east end, Maywood, Woodward to the east end, Woodside Park, Oakdale to Ridge, Oakland Park Boulevard, Ridge to Woodward and Oxford, Ridge to Woodward. Now, all these streets were part of your, your asset management plan, your twenty year plan, so we pretty much selected all these streets based off that document. We just didn't come up with these out of the, out of the air, we, we used the documents that were produced previously and use that information. Okay, next slide. The loan application schedule. So the public comment period was from May eighth to June fourteenth. The public hearing is tonight, June fourteenth. The submittal of the final project plan is July first. Assuming we would receive approval from Eagle by sometime in August of this year. If approved and we can proceed with the construction or the design of the project, the city would work with Eagle on the loan process and approval of the loan would be around March twenty twenty three. If all goes well, we could have construction projects going in probably summer, fall of twenty twenty three and then that starts your four year period. Now, as Jim mentioned earlier, your, your project plan is good for five years, so. So if it doesn't get funded initially on the priority list, it could still, it'll still stay there, and it may come up on the next year. And it may bump up higher in the scoring because there may be other projects that went down that had a higher scores and, you know, yours would bump up. But it'll stay on that list for five years. Some of the impacts of our project. So there's short-term impacts, which include, you know, some temporary inconvenience for residents and businesses. The noise, obviously, related to construction equipment, the dust from construction itself and materials that are being hauled around backfill trenches or openings or whatnot, road closures, lane closures, detours, that types of things. Some mitigation measures that we could do to try to minimize that is dust control, keeping stockpiles of backfill materials to a minimum, soil erosion control devices to protect your catch basins so they're not getting filled with dirt and debris, plan out traffic control and coordinate with residents, businesses, schools, your refuge companies, your, you know, your post office, you know, so they know that, hey, there's construction ahead and, you know, I need to park on the side street to start my walk or something. And obviously, most importantly, we need to maintain emergency access through the streets at all times. Long-term impacts, which are positives, improvement to the quality of water distribution system, improved reliability of water distribution system and compliance with current fire flow standards, replacement of your aging infrastructure and removal of your lead components and lead service leads that are within the city. There are no mitigation measures proposed because all those long-term impacts are positive. And that's it for the presentation. If there's any comments or questions, I'm here to answer.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. Thanks. It was great to hear the alternatives.
Yes. Yeah, that was a requirement. I had to make sure I said that.
That was six hundred pages of fun, too. It was very intriguing.
My doc is still downloading.
There's a lot in there that gets you points for the priority listings, so.
Oh, that's cool.
Yeah.
Sure.
Well, and I know you guys kept going back in and working on, you know, boosting those points, and so thank you both, Jim and Mike. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, I think I will open the public hearing. Are there any comments from people in the audience? All right, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. And may I have a motion?
Mayor, I move the drinking water state revolving fund, DWSRF project plan be approved, including the selected alternative, and that the city manager be designated as the authorized representative for all activities associated with the project.
So you second?
I second.
Any comments from anyone or questions?
Yeah, thanks very much for the work.
Yes.
Thank you.
I hope we get this.
Right.
I have no questions, but yes, fingers crossed, everyone. Fingers crossed. Let's get the money.
Right. All right, may we take a vote?
Commissioner Budman?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmier?
Yes.
Commissioner Lanko?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Scott?
Yes.
And the motion carries. All right, on to the Woodward streetscape.
Yes, we have an update on the Woodward streetscape project. So the project was finally approved by MDOT, I believe, this March, and we were finally able to send this project out to bid. And the news wasn't great. As you can see, this has been a project that's been in the hopper for some time, and COVID definitely set us back a good two years on getting this thing out and on the streets and out for bids, and that hurt us. You can see that we had our grant applications from Eagle and TAP in twenty eighteen were approved. That's four years ago now. So by the time we were able to get these out on the street, the news wasn't good. Just for some context, we had a couple of overlapping grants. And we have the Woodward Road Diet, which is a totally separate thing proceeding on its own track. That yellow portion on Southbound Woodward on the west side is part of that project. Focus on the east side of Woodward here. You'll see the green and the purple. If you want to move to the math, Amy. The green and the purple lines here are generally the boundaries of where the Eagle Stormwater Infiltration Streetscape Grant and then the SEMCOG and MDOT TAP grant for the cycle track. The Eagle Stormwater Infiltration Grant was to provide stormwater infiltration to put a two-year storm into the ground. And that's two point three something inches of rain within a twenty-four hour period that we put into the ground and infiltrate rather than putting it into the sewers. And as part of that, we were going to do a streetscape update, refresh the streetscape, get more green, more plants, take out some of the tired old mid-nineties bricks that line the street now. And then on top of that, we layered the cycle track TAP grant. That's the purple segment from Sylvan up to Main Street and then on up to six ninety-six to do a two-way cycle track. And that would be layered basically on top. Go ahead to the next slide, please. And this is just to give you some context of what that would look like in a plan view. You can see the sidewalk, the cycle track, which is at sidewalk level, and then you have the parking protecting the cycle track from the through lanes. Next slide, please. And this is sort of a three-quarters aerial view. It really kind of explains what this would look like. Notable things are, you can see where the cycle track and sidewalk crossings are pushed back from the travel lanes on Woodward. This allows a car to pull through. So when a car is waiting to turn on the Woodward, it's not blocking the sidewalk. It's actually in front of the cycle track and the sidewalk, which improves safety for cyclists because you don't have a car looking in one direction, waiting to turn on the Woodward with a driver looking to their left. And if a bicycle is coming from the right, that bike is passing behind that car, not in front of it. So that's a significant safety concern that's improved by this. You can also see we get some more green and other amenities along Woodward to improve the streetscape for non-motorized and pedestrians. Next slide, please. So the original project plan, we had about a million dollars, a little more than a million dollars in grant funding, and we anticipated this to be about a one point five million dollar project, maybe one point six. But those were, again, old numbers. The grants we won were locked in at the cost estimates from the previous times before COVID. Our local city match was going to be six hundred thousand dollars roughly provided by the DDA. So no city funds were being used from this. This was a DDA-funded project. Next slide. And the low bid we got was two point seven million dollars. So that was one point one million dollars over engineers estimate from twenty nineteen. So that would increase the city's required match from six hundred thousand to one point seven million, which is not in any way feasible, possible, desirable. So we rejected those bids. So we went back, went back to the drawing board, and we have a revised approach. The first thing is the Eagle Stormwater Infiltration Grant was based on federal funding, and there's a shock clock that expires September thirty, twenty twenty-three. Your project has to be completely finished by September thirtieth, and that's including all of the landscaping being installed, everything being signed off on. At this point, if we rebid this, we're looking at a fall rebidding for spring twenty twenty-three construction. And that is far too narrow of a window to even try to continue to use the Eagle Stormwater Grant. And we also know that the funding that that grant provides is not sufficient to do the work at costs that we're seeing today. So we will abandon the Eagle Stormwater Grant. We also are able to access a lot of additional TAP funding for the cycle track. We initially had about four hundred thousand dollars of TAP grant funding, and we are anticipating matching that with about two hundred thousand dollars of local funds, again, coming out of that DDA funding. In speaking with SEMCOG, they have ample funding. They basically said that they'll provide eighty percent of current project cost, as long as that's a reasonable estimate. So I don't know, is Mike still here?
Yes.
Okay. Mike and Brett over at AEW have been working with MDOT to revise cost estimates based on what we saw in the bids that we got. And we're working to get a good number that MDOT agrees to that we can use for a new grant agreement with SEMCOG. Right now, we're shooting for one point seven million dollars for the total project costs. We're being conservative. In other words, we're estimating as if costs are going to remain as high as they were in our current bid, and we're hopeful that costs will actually come in a little lower in the fall. But we're still estimating that. And if MDOT agrees to fund that, then they'll provide eighty percent, or SEMCOG will provide eighty percent of that cost estimate. That would put our local match at about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then we would construct in twenty twenty-three. So splitting this into two separate phases. The first phase would be the cycle track from Sylvan North, including landscaping. We would take out the stormwater infiltration portion. We wouldn't have to do as much excavation. We wouldn't have to do as much underground work to provide the infiltration areas. But we still will provide green. We'll still be providing those green spaces, just probably with some different plants that don't require all of the underground excavation. Our goal is to install all of the trees that we were initially going to. So the project will look the same as it was planned to look. It just won't infiltrate the water into the ground. The city match is expected to be two hundred fifty to three hundred fifty thousand dollars. And again, we had budgeted for a six hundred thousand dollar local match initially. So this does leave us with some funding that we can use to start to conceptualize and plan for a Phase Two project from Sylvan South to the South City border. MDOT won't allow us to take lanes or reduce lanes in that segment due to the Woodward ditch. So this would just be a pure streetscape project. We could still reapply to Eagle for stormwater infiltration, to do stormwater infiltration in this portion of Woodward. We could just do a straight streetscape project where it's just putting in plants and not infiltrating water. That project can proceed on its own timeline, and we'll go back and start to work with the DDA to get their thoughts on how they want to proceed with that. There may be other grant funding that's not the Eagle Stormwater Infiltration Grant. There are some other grant funds that we can apply for, which we may or may not get, but we can start to work those angles as well. So the plan right now is while we have the TAP grant, while we have the funding availability, let's push forward at, you know, full speed ahead on getting that cycle track built. SEMCOG is very interested in seeing that happen with the TAP grant funding. They're very supportive of this project, so we have a good partner there who's really stepping up with a lot of additional funding. So at this point, we are working the plan. We're working with MDOT to nail down what the new grant agreement would be for funding. Once we get that in place, AEW and Living Lab will go back and revise the plan set. It's not changing a lot in terms of geometry or layout or looks, but, you know, there's a lot of detail in the plans that needs to be changed. And then we put that out to bid this fall, and then spring twenty twenty-three, we're under construction. So it's kind of alternately, it was pretty disappointing, but then also very, very hopeful in a short amount of time with what's transpired with this over the last ten days, I guess it's been. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have, and at least now we know. You know, we knew that as inflation is, you know, what, eight point six percent over the last year, it was always a worry what that was going to do to us, and at least now we know and we can plan and overcome and move forward.
Thank you, Jim. And it was interesting to watch the process for the last ten days. A few gray hairs just tried to watch it come together, for sure. Did you have anything, Mike?
I just wanted to add to that, you know, we, you know, AEW represents multiple municipalities in southeast Michigan, Oakland, Wayne, Macomb County. And we have been seeing this the last few months, these crazy bids coming in and just seeing really high prices from what we're accustomed to. Even when we're trying to add a little more contingency to our numbers and whatnot, they're still coming in high. Particularly this one, you know, we only had two bidders, so there was real no bidding competition on this project. And I called, I looked up the plan holder list on MDOT's website, and there was a couple contractors that I saw on there that I had worked with in the past on other projects, and I called them, and they just said they're too busy to bid on it right now. So we're dealing with that, and we're dealing with, you know, the inflation issues. There's also material shortages right now that we're dealing with. So it's just some crazy times for construction right now.
Wow.
Yeah.
I ask?
Sure, please.
Yeah, there's a lot up in the air, and it sounds like on one of those past slides, you guys have some sort of framework in order to engage with the citizens and like to help smoothen some of those. Is that a formal, I guess, mechanism, like in the agreement somewhere, or is that just kind of like an idea that is like aspirational and gets implemented based on the client?
Do you mean specifically for the TAP or for?
Ah. Well, I mean, I guess mostly for the construction. I'm most concerned with how
Oh, you're referring to
rubber meets the road, right.
You're referring to the traffic control what I was talking about.
Right, and you're talking about like long-term implications and short-term. So part of the short-term implication was like some way of yeah, like talking to the citizens and like mapping it out, like in the post office you mentioned, and some of these other institutions that use our infrastructure.
So on past road projects that I've done here in the city, we've had a workshop with the residents on the street to kind of go over the project and let them have, you know, answer or ask their questions, get them answered. We also send out notices before we start. And like if it's a road project where, you know, you're taking out half the road and you're working on half the time, we give out notices, you know, giving them updates, you know, like, hey, we're going to be paving here soon, so, you know, you can't park on the street and you won't have access to your driveway, that type of thing. But we keep you guys updated.
So that's like standard framework?
That's part of what we do, yes.
Okay, okay. All right, appreciate that. And I guess with communicating some of these, excuse me, challenges and obtaining materials and labor, and so like, is that part of the, like, if the neighbors are, you know, wire these porta-potties up for six months or something, like, is that part of the conversation, or could it be part of the conversation?
That could be, like, yeah, if we had a project that was delayed for months, you know, because of materials shortage or something, I'm sure we can work with the contractor to move that, get it off the site, and bring it back later.
Okay.
Yep.
Thanks. I just want to minimize the disruption to the people out there.
No, it's easier to work with the residents when you're giving them notification, you know, at least you're giving them something.
Right. I think people are understanding of the situation we're in as long as we're talking. It's why it's on the agenda tonight so that people knew things are changing.
Yes.
Well, that's what I know. As we've done road projects, there's always a kickoff meeting, you know, where you guys give them a lot of information and an opportunity to ask a lot of questions, too.
And then, and there's people that, you know, that can't make it or family, whatever, but we still give out the paper notices ahead of the project as well. So everyone's getting something on that street.
That's great.
Or if there's an emailing blast that could go out, you know, something like that.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. I actually have a quick question, and I don't know if we can answer this right now, but regarding the cycle track, number one, I too, I mean, watching the ups and downs of this week was interesting, and ultimately, we ended in a great spot of being able to move forward with the cycle track. Doing the cycle track now, is there any potential issues with in the future doing the stormwater infiltration? I mean, completing the cycle track now, does that impede our ability in the future to do any additional water infiltration and anything like that?
The short answer to that is yes. It does pretty much preclude doing stormwater infiltration along Woodward from Sylvan to Main.
Okay.
So one of the things we could look at doing would be to re-scope the stormwater infiltration project because, you know, water, it doesn't really matter where it's getting into our sewer system. It all flows to the same place. We have two outlets. One of them, the water on the east side of Ridge, all goes into the sewers. It all flows towards Iron Ridge. There's a sixty-six inch pipe that collects it all at Iron Ridge, and then it moves on. If you're west of Ridge, it all flows to Oakdale, where it goes to the north end of Oakdale, and then it goes underneath six ninety-six and then on up through Huntington Woods, and it all goes. it all goes out to the same outlets. So it doesn't matter if you're infiltrating water on Woodward, or if you're infiltrating water somewhere else, it's the same net benefit to the sewer system, you're keeping the water out. So I would say that, yes, we're going to lose the stormwater infiltration from Sylvan to Main Street, but that doesn't mean we can't put a similar or greater quantity of water into the ground somewhere else. You'll remember, you'll remember, we had the Clinton River Watershed Council in with their Watertowns plans, where they had conceived of those projects in the medians. We could do stormwater infiltration in the medians on Oakland Park, on Park, Poplar Park, potentially even Oakdale, capture that water, because that's going to the same place that the water that comes off Woodward is going. So we could use, we could apply for Eagle Stormwater Infiltration funding to move those projects forward. And we also have the corner by the school at the Oxford Cambridge Horseshoe. So I would say that if we're interested in trying to move the ball forward and to get an equivalent amount of stormwater infiltration, we can, and we can just look at other ways and other places of focusing our efforts to do that.
Awesome, thank you very much.
Thanks for the question.
Yeah, that's great.
Were there any other questions for Jim or Mike tonight?
Nope.
I think we're good. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
You're welcome.
That was great.
More to follow. All right. Onto item number 12, agreement between the County of Oakland and the City of Pleasant Ridge for property assessing services. I heard a little bit about this this weekend from people.
You were hanging out with that kind of crowd.
I was hanging out with that crowd.
The assessor crowd?
Yes, strangely enough.
So we've used Oakland County for our assessing and equalization services for a long time. They have a great depth of talent and capability there, and it's a cost-effective solution for us. They're proposing a one-year contract renewal. Normally, we do these for three years, but they're in the middle of finding a new director, and so they're going out and doing one-year contract renewals with all of their communities. And I think they do 20 or more than 20, provide services for many, many Oakland County local governments. Their cost increase this year that they propose is 4%. Again, you know, this is a number that we're seeing commonly, 8.6% again over the last year this month, so this is a larger number than we would have seen in the past, but for now, it's the new normal. And then we'll look next year at what that longer-term agreement looks like. So this is a one-year agreement. The request is your consideration of the assessing services renewal.
Great. May I have a motion?
Your Honor, I move the agreement with Oakland County Equalization Division Assistant Services for Assessing Services effective July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2023 be approved, and that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign the agreement.
Do I have a second?
Support.
Any discussion or questions for Jim?
I would just add, for next year's negotiation, just pushing back and substantiating cost increases and asking what the suppliers are doing to control their costs. I understand inflation, it bites everybody.
Right.
We got to ask, too.
Sure.
This one year makes sense.
Got it. All right, may we take a vote?
Commissioner Lenko?
Yeah.
Commissioner Budnitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Terry?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, the motion carries. And we're up to City Manager's Report.
Yes, so, you know, while we're talking about infrastructure, Consumers is getting to the end of their time, I think, for this year in the city. They're wrapping up on Sylvan and Indiana, and they'll be doing their restoration work, they're continuing on the restoration work on the West Side. If any residents need phone numbers or contact information to contact consumers with any issues, just contact us at City Hall, and we can get you that information. And the other thing I'd add is, next month, we'll be starting on the Woodward Heights Traffic Management Study. We've been working behind the scenes with Tool Design to get that project going. I've had a number of meetings with them as we scope out the project. Dates to remember, July 13 at 4:00 p.m. and 6:00 p.m., Tool is going to be leading walking tours along Woodward Heights, where any interested resident can come out and walk the street with Tool, talk about issues that they see, talk about issues they experience, and have a discussion with Tool about, you know, the problems and potentially, just depending on how the conversation goes, you know, maybe some potential solutions. This is part of Tool's initial information gathering process. There were some, you might notice some rubber tubes that were set up on the street, Tool was gathering traffic data. To substantiate, they were, those tubes can distinguish between types of traffic more in more granular detail than our radar box can. So Tool will actually be able to say, okay, well, we know that truck traffic has gone up on the street, but how much of that is over-the-road semis, how much of that is Amazon delivery trucks? Because, you know, we know that people's consumption patterns have changed as well post-COVID. So they'll be able to distinguish and segment that data a little bit more for us, so they'll be going back and crunching those numbers along with some other information. Then on July 14, we're going to have the first public engagement session over at Iron Ridge. There's a swim meet at the Community Center on July 14, so we cannot hold the public meeting there. So Iron Ridge has offered to host us. If you haven't been over to Iron Ridge, it'll be a great chance to check out the progress they've made over there. It's going to be held in the Breeze Way, which is an open section which goes through the 660 building. It connects through that building to the old E-Prize Tower, to the parking lot that's along Bermuda, so I think it'll be a nice venue, and Tool will be doing a brief presentation, and then they'll be breaking out into some different tables where residents will have the opportunity to discuss some items with them in a somewhat structured, small group format. They're still working through the details on that. There will also be a community survey that will be launched. We have a postcard that is in production right now that's going out to all city residents. There's going to be a page on the city website, www.cityofpleasantridge.org/woodwardheights. That's going to be the homepage for the project, so the survey will be available on that site once it's released and developed. There's an email signup list there, you can sign up for project updates, to get project update emails on that site, and then project updates as the project progresses from Tool will be posted on that page as well, so everyone will be able to kind of stay connected. The plan is to have a second workshop meeting in September. That'll be a Zoom video conference workshop where Tool will be presenting some potential recommendations for public discussion before they move forward to prepare their final plan. So July 13 and 14 are your opportunities to really engage with our consultant team to make your issues known, and we're looking forward to having Tool here. They're a great firm to work with, they're not your average traffic engineers, they really are pretty good at being holistic transportation engineers, and I'm looking forward to see what they come up with for the street. I will add that, I think Howard Smith mentioned at the beginning that out of, in summer '21 or '20, there was a couple things we agreed to do on Woodward Heights. Basically, we're holding off on implementing those until this study is complete. You know, I think the commitment that we have is whatever Tool recommends and the public gets behind, we'll find a way to implement. So we're waiting to see what the recommendations of this traffic management study are before we go out and start changing things on the street, we're just going to wait and try to do that all at once. So, you know, stay tuned on those. And I think that's all I have for now. If anyone has any questions on those or any other items, let me know.
Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Yeah, thanks, Jim, appreciate the update. And just to drive this point home, but so if, there's been a lot of discussion about calming versus traffic reduction, if residents have a strong preference in this, they would, should come out in July to either of those events and express this preference, because this is when we're going to set kind of the intention and the outcome of this project, right?
Exactly. Yeah, we've, as we all know, we've had a lot of discussion about Woodward Heights, and over the last two years, I think we've seen a general change in the way traffic moves all over. And I, for those of you that don't know, my day job is following mobility trends and looking at how traffic moves around the nation through data that comes from vehicles, so I know that as a general rule, traffic has changed everywhere. So it's no surprise to me that people on Woodward Heights, or Ridge Road, or Oakland Park, or even on Devonshire, where I live, might have experienced some changes in the last two years. So I'm really curious to see how this turns out, what Tool does for us, and July 13 and 14 are really the excellent opportunity for people to just let themselves be heard. Wherever you live in Pleasant Ridge, show up, come in, and let us know what you think about Woodward Heights.
I think one thing I would add to that, those are good points, particularly the community survey, we are going to have some traffic questions that are broad and general to the entire community. While we're doing this, we're going to take the opportunity to make sure that anyone else who has traffic issues throughout the city has the opportunity to make those known as well, just so, you know, we can start to collect that data for future projects, future plans.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to reiterate just a few things, just because there has been more conversation in the last couple days on social media, and just making sure. So I just wanted to reiterate what Jim said, because my voice may be louder, I don't know how it sounds on the computer, but again, keep an eye out of that. Very soon, this is in process, but we will have information on our website, postcards are going out, we do have these meetings, so they are coming very soon, there will be information out there, you can sign up for emails, you can keep yourself informed, so these things will be coming. And then also, just to comment off of what Commissioner Lenko said, and, you know, the original request for qualification was actually not, was traffic management, so it was kept broad to encompass both potential calming, potential reduction, all of these potential issues, so that during these meetings, they can listen to the concerns of the people, and we can all together come up with the scope of what exactly we're looking at. So there was no intention towards one or the other, it was kept broad on purpose so that all of these things could be encompassed into what the ultimate scope is. So again, just to reiterate.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
And make sure to, like, everyone will be getting the mailing, Jim said, and so, but make sure your neighbors who maybe, like, you know they're very busy, or they don't always pay attention to that stuff, make sure that they have heard about this and remind them about it, too. Because, you know, we do, you know, we can do it on social media, and it's posted on the website, but I know not everybody checks all those things all the time. So try and, you know, remind your neighbors to come on out.
Mm-hmm. I'm good. You're good.
Come on, Chris.
I'll bring it full circle, then. I said this a while back when Howard was here, and if this were an easy fix, I think we would have figured that out at this point. It's a multi-variable type of issue, and you encompass everything that Mayor Scott said with the differing traffic trends, and then all the things that we have put forth, I'm really, really genuinely curious to see what Tool puts forth, and I'm really excited to see the community input into this project, so if it were easy, it would have been done.
Well, as well as it's gotten worse, you know, I mean, we're all working from home, you know, the density, we are living in such a highly sought-after area, you know, Ferndale has gotten more and more popular every day, and you have more housing units in, you know, hundreds more in Ferndale, hundreds more in Royal Oak, so, you know, we have more traffic, and so it does, it complicates everything. So that's all, thanks.
No problem. All right, I think we're on to other business. Is there other business tonight?
The only thing I have, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Okay, is our wonderful resident, Frank Anthony Polito, wrote this great book that sort of, it pays homage to Pleasant Ridge in very, like, tongue-in-cheek ways, but he swears none of it is any of us, really. But it's a, what is it, it's a Domestic Partners in Crime mystery, and it's supposed to be a very fun, I just got it, so I haven't read it yet, but it's a very sweet murder mystery. So it's supposed to be a cozy, I think he calls it a cozy book. So you can get it at several of the local bookstores, but, and also online, of course, so, and I bet our library has it as well. So that's all I have.
Awesome. I think that is it tonight. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Move adjourn.
Is that seconded?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everyone, for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
We got to go plant. Thanks, Jim. Feel better. Be good.
See you all soon.